This is the Sherburne zoning board, Town of Sherburne zoning board appeals, February 5th, 2024 continued hearings for Farm Road Homes and Greenwood Street Homes, both under Massachusetts General Law as Chapter 40B. Are there any other boards that would like to come to order since you're, some of you are here?
Yes, I think the select board would like to do so. Do I have a motion from the select board to open our meeting?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thanks, Rick.
Okay, great. Board of Health?
I don't see a quorum yet, so if we do note that, then I will ask to open our meeting.
Okay.
Daryl, Diana's coming in now.
She is. Okay, then only till she joins and then I will move to the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a lot of ground to cover here tonight. We've often, sorry.
Oops, sorry, since Diana, we now have a quorum for Board of Health?
Please go ahead.
All right, noting that it's 7:02 PM on February 5th, 2024, I will call the Board of Health meeting to order, and since it's a virtual meeting, we can, those who are present from the board can announce themselves. So Darrell Beardsley, present.
Julie Dreyfus, present.
Diana Hook, present.
Okay, thank you.
All right, awesome. All right, so we've often taken Greenwood first and Farm Road second. I think I'd like to reverse that tonight and take Farm Road first, because tonight, for once, it may be the relatively simpler project. Bob Marchison and team, I believe I saw some detailed materials come in from you on Sunday, the 4th. Some of them were dated the 2nd. It looks like that's your latest updated septic plans and responses to Tetra Tech and the Board of Health on septic issues and nitrogen loading. Did I have that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Excellent. And I think in your, in your cover note, you said that you believed you were done on traffic, site layout, safety, water supply, and, and site control. And I know that Arthur Fennell sent in a note saying dissenting on the, on the traffic issue, and so we have that in our record. I might suggest, Bob and team, that if, if you'd like to do a short presentation on where you are on the septic and nitrates and why you think it fits, maybe we could take that in tonight, and then because it has just landed, give Tetra Tech and others the chance to respond to it the next time.
Sure, no, I mean, absolutely, Rick. Obviously, we didn't expect Tetra Tech or you all to have had a chance to review it. That wasn't the point of getting it. We just wanted to get it to you as soon as we had it, so. And as I said, as I said in my cover email, we would have liked to have had the stormwater finalized for you as well, but obviously, we've had historic flooding, not only in our community, but most communities in Massachusetts, and so we are kind of catching our breaths and doing very significant engineering analysis on that, on what's happened, and we hope to, actually, we'll have a surveyor out there and have that engineering to you, I hope, in the next week or so.
Right, and thank you for mentioning that. It wasn't my notes, but then I couldn't read them. I've had shoulder surgery on my left hand, which I usually write with. I'm writing with my right hand now, and it makes my handwriting even worse than usual. But yes, the stormwater, you were going to revisit it after you had done a little more engineering. Okay. So you and your team have the floor. Tell us where you think you are on septic, especially nitrate loading and that sort of thing.
Well, I think I need to turn that over to Deshawn.
Good evening. So we are, after, we had a meeting in December regarding the nitrogen loading and the groundwater mounding. So we conducted soil testing. Maybe I should share my screen?
Please.
Just to see.
Okay, we can see, see something.
See, this is the site. So this is the nitrogen. So just before the nitrogen loading, so we also updated the legion field in this valley. So if you're looking, this is the comp, so the perimeter, and within that, there will be takeout is the 55, and the, no, this one is probably 55. This is a 55, and then there's a new one is the 53. So will be takeout, which is counting about 26, 9 or 2.7 acres of the total area. And this, the thinner line is the property line, as you can see. So the thinner, and then this is the watershed line coming in. So there's some of the offsite, the conservation land contributed or finals to this valley where our septic is located. So we have done our groundwater mounding. We took the two soil samples from our legion field, and one soil sample from each of our detention basin area, just to confirm the soil texture and to do, and we also can analyze the hydraulic conductivity or permeability. And so that data was per the peer reviews request, and it's, it's confirmed what we use number. And in addition, we pegged in all the wells. One is for the 55, and one is 53 is basically lined up here, and then one is 49. So the three wells all had the unconsolidated soils, aquifer depths above the bedrock, 17 feet at the 55, and 18 at 53, and the 25 at 49. So the 53 is located almost exactly in the same hydrogeological setting, and with the aquifer depths at the highest groundwater condition with two foot of collection, it's a 14.5. So which is a clause in the whole site is kind of consistent, sort of, you know, this isolated pond was maned up in the 1980s. So we did a measurement, and so under the normal high groundwater, it's about 15 feet deep. So we have one well here, one well here, one well here. So which is really close from the, the reference and the soil test bit we did in the front and in the back. It's all getting to the depths of over 20 feet or in that kind of range. So it's kind of really match like a consistent numbers. So we get that confirmed, so we're using that number. And the permeability, we used for the legion field was taken from a typical book. So it's basically specializing in soils and rock properties. So and with the confirmation of the analysis, it's also showed a very consistent. And that's the last time we also explained the groundwater monitoring wells here. It shows the groundwater is very deep, you know, more than 10 feet. And it's almost lined up with the offside wetlands, which is the receptor of our nitrogen loading area for impact, because none of the wells is down gradient of our legion field. With the groundwater mounding, the plume of the septic field, it expanded to the entire property edge of here. So we're using that as our analysis boundary as a receptor. So and we analyzed for three, four scenarios, so that we know we, our analysis is, it's, it's, you know, it's conservative. I think in this up to, so the, the input of the analysis, it basically, if it's a conventional septic system without any IA treatment, is about 35 milligrams per liter. And the IA system we designed and proposed is 19 milligram per liter. And so if any places typically, if you're using fertilizer, will be 33, and the golf course, so we don't have it, but so if it's a rainwater, just in the regular lawn, we consider it contains 0.1 milligram per liter. If it's a runoff over impervious area, it will be 1.5. So the scenario, so the flow, I apologize, this one is a typo. So it's all third, 8360. So the, the first scenario is assume that we have no fertilizers, and I discussed with Bob, so we can easily control that as the condominium and just wait a minimum lawn. So and with the, with the IA treatment to 19. So that's our pretty much normal operation scenario. But we like to understand a little bit in the variance. So if assuming there's something like, you know, if, if the treatment has failed temporary, so which it shouldn't impact the long-term nitrogen budget, but that will make in the sewage to the conventional 35. So we conducted that analysis, and then, so we're assuming there's no offsite drainage area will be recharge the groundwater even though they are upgraded. It's very unreal. It's, it's just a sensitivity study with our AI treatment. And then the other one is, so this number, I apologize, as somehow was probably from, from the old, let me see. So the number is not correct, but the numbers, the 19 remains, assuming we have like a 40% of a landscaping area, roughly two acres, if it's going to be.
Excuse me, sir. Would the correct number be 8360 if you had it there?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Don't, don't try to draw it. Don't worry. Okay, there we go. Look at that.
So, so that's what, so, all right, so this, those are, so that scenario, so based on the study, so we believe the normal nitrogen level. So with all the recharges, we calculated, so it's going to be 3.89 at the property line, so which is very low to probably meet the cave cost standard 5 minute per minute. So if assuming no offsite, and if our system is somehow get failed, and then, and the worst scenario, so it's go back to like a conventional, so it will 6.95, it's still less than 10. And then, so even we don't use offsite recharge area, but so, so we have our treatment plan as we, we before described, this system is mostly by gravity, and there's no chemicals or that things that need to be used. So there's a, there's a three, two, triplex, those in pumps. So it's like, if the three pumps all failed, it's almost really, it's probably, I'm not say zero, but it's very rare. If we, I'm sure we can manage that not to. So, but even that is still 5.6. And so even we have some lawn, somebody sneaking in, they want their lawn in the backyard a little bit look nicer. So two acres lawn for this little community is a lot. So, so it's, we'll boost up the nitrogen to 6.32. It's still way less than 10. So this is basically the major, so we have all the supporting documents in, you know, a report and as, as appendix. So this is a major concern, I believe, to, to the community, to any people. So that's, that's the conclusion. And I think if I probably stop here, if there's any, I know people haven't get chance to review it, then if you had reviewed it or anything, so I would probably go from, to, to explain it in a question-answer way, rather than for me to get in everybody falling asleep.
No, we, we, we appreciate the, the brief summary as opposed to walking us through every page, every single one of 49 pages with all the detail. Board of Health and Tetra Tech, I know you really haven't had any chance to digest this. Are there any off the top of your head comments that you want to send in, or do you want to reserve your rights to take a look at it and boil it down? Andrea Stiller?
Hi, I'm not on the Board of Health, so those guys can go first. I'm on ground.
Yeah, let, let, let me try to hear from, if I don't hear from Board of Health or Tetra Tech shortly, I'm going to assume that you're reserving your rights to look at all this and come back to us with your, with your thoughts. Is that? Oh, and Deshawn, could you stop sharing? Then I'll be able to see more people, please. Sorry.
No, no, that's.
I would rather have time to go through it carefully.
Perfectly entirely fair. Who's here from Tetra Tech? Anybody?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman, Steve.
Oh, hi, hi, Steve. You want to reserve your rights as well, probably, yes?
That, that is correct.
Okay, smart, careful people. That's what we want. All right, Andrea Stiller?
Neither smart or careful. So, all right, sorry about this, everyone. But, okay, so at the property edge, 3.89 without fertilizer, 6.32 with fertilizer, the drinking water standard is 0.1. So that's what we're allowed. We drink our groundwater, and that's what we're allowed to have in our groundwater. And I have just a few thoughts. I did sort of go through the, the information, and where, where I'm coming from is that with the, with the, you know, reality check of the K value, the 24 centimeter foot per day, it, it, when you work in hydrology, you, and you, and, and even just looking at, which is awesome that they did it, the distribution, the particle grain sizes, this, there's something that, that doesn't look, look right with that number. That's a really.
Let me interrupt you for just half a second. Deshawn, in the comments, some people have asked you to put the screen back up, if you would, please, sir. Sorry, Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you, Andrea. I'm sorry I interrupted you. I just thought it was important. We looked at the numbers as you were speaking on these comments. So thank you so much. Oh, no, no worries. Okay, so, so just from that perspective, where, where the, the K, the hydro, hydraulic conductivity number just looks really too high, given the, the kind of soils we have there. I mean, if we were, you know, somewhere where it was, you know, very clean gravel or very uniform soils, that would, you know, that might be the case, but, but that's not. We have quite a bit of fines in the, in the soil. And so just looking at the, at the numbers again, well, I'll, I'll, I'll stay general for a moment. So the, the calculations that were done using, using this method, the Hazen method, or Handzen method, it's, it's, it's an approximation, and the variability can be like 200% one way or the other. It's really not a determinative way to evaluate the hydraulic conductivity. What, and if, you know, if it were a single-family house, you know, whatever, I don't, I don't know if, if that's customary, but what is customary to really find out what's going on in the soil is to do in situ testing, and that's what, it's called a, you, you can do a falling head borehole permeability test, or a static head borehole permeability test. They're not, you know, super expensive. You do need a well in order to do it, a cased well, but it, it really, it really evaluates the hydraulic conductivity properly. Another point, just with regard to the, the method, it's, it's really not intended to be used for this purpose, and it wasn't designed for this purpose, although some may use it on occasion, but it is, it is, should not be used when, if you look at the soil distribution charts, it is, it should not be used, or it should only be used if the ratio of the, this is the grain size, particle size analysis, when the ratio of the D60 to the D10 particle sizes are less than five. And I'm just looking at the septic system in one sample, it was 120, and in the other, the ratio was 52. So it, it's, it's a, it's a method that, that was originated to determine the permeability, the hydraulic conductivity of like a sand filter type material, not, not something as important as this. So anyway, that, those are my thoughts on the, on this evaluation. I also have some specific thoughts about just looking at the numbers in detail. The, used in the formula, there's a, there's a C coefficient, and for the type of soils that are described in the, in the particle, in the, in the, in the save analysis, and, and by Deshawn, the, the C value range, I, I think should be 40 to 80, and what was actually used in the equation, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 143 in one place, and 93 in another. I just, I, I, I don't think, that doesn't seem representative to me. So I, I have, you know, in the, I don't know, the, the temperature, I think, is zero, and I think it, I think there's, I think it needs to be like higher. There is an engineering number that I wrote down that, that is appropriate, but I don't think it's zero degrees Celsius. So there were, you know, some detaily, the thing is, if you use the wrong values for these analyses, you get, you can really change the result. So it, so it matters.
As in so much of life, garbage in, garbage out.
I, I wasn't going to say that, but.
And I'm not, I'm not disparaging the science here. I'm just talking about the principle that if you have the wrong inputs, you get the wrong output.
Well, yeah.
Will you, before next time, which is the 26th, be able to write some of this up and maybe send us an email?
Yeah, and, and folks, correct me if I'm, if, you know, if I'm, you know, wrong about my interpretation of, of the, what numbers were used, and, but I really, it just, the gut check for the hydraulic conductivity doesn't work. And then that translates to the mounding calculations. It, it, it's just the basis for a lot of the assessment.
Okay, all right. Well, this is, this is why we're going to look at it more carefully. Thank, thank, thank you very much for all of that.
Yeah, okay, if I can just have a very quick follow-up on Andrea's comment. So the first is probably the most important one is drinking water standard is not 0.1 parts per million. I don't know where you get that number. As far as I know, it's still 10 parts per million. Okay, so that's, that's like 100 times different.
The decimal is the important, the decimal place.
Right, okay. So that, second, second is about the methodology of how the hydraulic conductivity is connect, is estimated. As we presented, the first one is in the, in the collective textbook, not textbook, because, well, I don't know if we can see, I probably can show you quickly. So if you, if you guys can see my book, all right. So this is a book, so have the expert from all over the world did this one, and the number, based on the CO2 sand in the, on the average number is 28 feet per day. We use 24 is to start with, is already conservative. And if you are looking on the methodology, whether you're going to do downwell constant hat test or falling hat test, we understand that. So I have done plenty of it. It's not going to give you a constant number. So nature is not like it made in the lab, as you pointed out, like a sand filter, you can choose in just one size for all. So particle size, the mother nature is going to, even you're taking the sample from the same place, so will not 100% the same. If anybody have visited like a glacial place, you will see all that glacial deposit things. As far as what the hydraulic conductivity, so there's a two parts of it. So the, the peer review here can well understand, if you read any textbook, understand permeability or hydraulic conductivity, there's two parts of it for groundwater mounding. One is called a vertical, the another one is horizontal. So the vertical will control the how quick the water can get down, but the horizontal will likely control how quickly it can spread it out, control the mounding. And normally, typically, horizontal hydraulic conductivity can be like a, on average, I'm not going to say everyone, but it's statistically, it's about 10 times of vertical ones. So based on all that, and we also have our permeability, a pergrate done here, so three minutes to five minutes. And you say, well, that's not exactly the permeability. Yeah, but the I have a, there's a peer-reviewed documentations on that. So pergrate can correlate it to a permeability, so which is probably much better and a stronger correlation. So we, we have, we can show you that. So based on all that, so we calculated, if you're looking at, let me see if I can bring up the table, the summary table. All right, so this is summary table. So there's a range, so I did point it out, so that those parameters you picked up, there could be this and that. And different people can definitely interpret into some different way, but that's, it's, this is still a better way to, to making some reference. So, so we are talking about the two wells, so they, they did vary a little bit, so, but I have two methods, not just a Hazen. And also I have a Kenny's method, so that there's a two method estimate. It ranges 29 to 850, which is soil number one around the down gradient side, which is almost like in, when you have a highway, you have an exit, that is probably more control your groundwater and mounding than the ones coming from the back door, how many people is coming in. All right, so, and then the, the upper one is relatively the low me sand part, the lower one is almost, is a sand, it's very little fines, it's not that much. So you're talking about less than a few percent. So around S2, so which is ranging from 4.39 to 76, so average is 40, the soil S1 average is 439. But if you're looking at the typical from, from, from research books, that's one I just showed you. So for average, like a sand, so it's 153. For an average CO2 sand is 28, the one we use is 24. So as engineer, you have to base on all the, all the numbers from different perspectives, to picking the ones I, I feel comfortable and engineering, I think is reliable to use. That's what I did. So it's not garbage. There's, there's lots of garbage processed in order to reach into the number of 24. Okay.
Right, okay, fair enough. And, and the goal tonight is not to have the final resolution on, on whose analysis is better or worser, but, but to get yours out on the table. Ms. Stiller certainly has some reservations. I bet probably the Board of Health and, and the peer reviewer may as well. And again, I don't want to try to mill out through all those tonight, because I think we need most of our time for Greenwood. Mr. Moore, briefly. You're muted, Brian.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, Brian Moore, 49 Farm Road. I, I did not prepare a letter this week because the material came in today. I actually agree with Deshawn that there are many, many variables that go into this calculation. And I believe that this is more evident. And I believe that this is more evidence that there should be a study done to determine. What the impacts to the nearby private water wells will be from the septic. It is a huge septic. It's probably going to be the biggest septic put into this town. And to have this thing adjudicated over. Three weeks when the Board of Health is under pressure and ZBA is under pressure is absurd. So I think. The ZBA should feel entitled to ask for more time. So that we can thoroughly vet this thing, maybe a pump test or two to actually determine. Where, you know, the groundwater comes from that's in our well. I can tell you, yes. The term downgrading exists, but when you're in bedrock, that ceases to exist. Our well. Intake is several dozens, if not maybe a hundred feet lower than where this septic is going in in the ground. And we know what runs downhill and it runs downhill in the my well from that septic. So I'd be very, very. I I would like to impress upon the board how important conditioning, any approval or forward action on this. Would be to allow for the testing to occur so that the Shang has the correct numbers. To put into his system. And I'm looking at the table that's up on the screen right now, and I agree with Ms. Stiller. Those K values are absurd numbers. There's a positive correlation between K values and flow velocity. You can't pick a high K value and then say it doesn't flow fast to the property line. Just like you can't pick a low K value and says it's a bullet train to the property line. The two are one in the same. If you pick a high K value, it's going to the property line quickly. Those are my comments for tonight. I really hope that you guys take them to heart and I really hope that. We get some applications that don't have typos and misspellings and other erroneous information in them.
Okay, thank you. Unless there are other comments.
I just, I'm sorry. So my name is Marilla. I'm on Old Orchard Road. I am new here, but the fact that there, so it says a computer program using one method. Have we tried other methods to test any of these values? Number one. Number two, I'll, you know, just. Comment on the previous person. I completely agree the fact that there's so many errors in here. This just does not seem like something and and it came out today. And it came out today, like no one has been able to look at this and we are.
No, no, just a moment, just a moment. It didn't come out today. It came out over the weekend and the 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 project proponent was saying he was not asking for comments back tonight for just that reason. So I don't I don't think it's fair to say that.
It's a meeting today, but it came out over the weekend. So you're expecting people to.
No.
Have comments or.
No, no ma'am, no ma'am, no ma'am. I I tried to be very clear and I'll try to be clear again. We were just trying to get it out on the table. We're not trying to have everybody feel a need to get all their comments in tonight. That would be wrong. It would be unfair and it would be inaccurate. So it's not what we're trying to do. I I I, you know, it sounds like you have some very good.
Throwing, you're throwing out numbers and you're throwing out terminology that people. Need time to process, but so what is the purpose of this? Uh uh, that's what I'm trying to understand. Is what is the purpose of this meeting and where exactly are we moving? Like anything kind of other than Andrea actually stating that. It's not working. I think she was the most helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll try it a third time, but you have to let me speak.
Okay.
The purpose of this meeting is not to have people feel cornered. Into having to respond tonight. We do not want people to feel cornered into having to respond tonight. As a matter of fact, because we need the airtime for Greenwood, I really don't want people to comment tonight. What I would like is to have it be all out on the table and that's why I invited to show him to make his presentation. And I do want people to take the time between now and the twenty sixth, which is our next meeting, to look at it carefully. And send in all sorts of thoughtful comments, because it sounds like you've got a bunch of them. But I'm not trying to push anybody to put them in tonight. Quite the opposite. I really, really, really do not want your comments tonight. Is that is that more clear?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. But but you've got a lot of good things to say, so please, please do weigh in, send us an email or come back next time. Mister Lesser, extremely briefly and Mister Fennel, extremely briefly.
Michael Lesser, fifty four Forest Street Conservation Commission and the Energy and Sustainability Committee. I have no comments other than to raise the issue I raised last time of whether the peer reviewer. Or somebody will respond to the comments that the Conservation Commission made. As well as to the Energy and Sustainability Committee and some other things about Phil and Coltar. I haven't seen any responses to those and I hope that you'll fit that into your hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, we 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 have your comments on the table. So we can certainly take them up when we're discussing what what we want to do by way of decision.
Well, then I guess the question then is, separate thing that I sent to you. A few weeks ago is about what kind of conditioning you do, whether if you don't get certain things back. Or you don't get any details, let's say, on how the buffer zone. Of the of the land subject to flooding is going to be landscaped or planted. Whether you can have a more general condition.
We'll 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 have to write our own conditions based on the information we have.
So does that mean that you're not going to get a peer review and therefore I should, we should be writing them for you as a proposal?
Well, i- i- if the Conservation Commission has has something they wish to see as conditions, I strongly suggest that you write them up. And get them in while while the hearing is open.
Then you have a you have a condition where. That.
Michael, I'm I'm not prepared to go through every possible condition we could do right now. If you have conditions that you want to do for the Conservation Commission, that's good, that's value added. We welcome that, but please write them up.
Well, I would appreciate if you could respond to the January sixteenth one, which asks about the level of detail that we would need to put in our condition.
I think the level of detail you should put in your condition is what you would like to see in our decision.
And can you have a condition whereby it says that later on, like we do for sometimes in conservation? That we have conditions where a landscape plan is sort of very loosely specked out. And then it recumps, knowing that gets to back to it, it has to come before the commission for approval.
You should you should you should write it up the way you want it. In general, our board cannot, ZBA cannot sort of kick the can. On conditions, we need to write up what we want. We can't say come back to us later and we'll tell you that's okay. I know the Conservation Commission does that. And in general, the ZBA cannot do that. So please, 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 please write up what what you want in 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 detail. We may not be able to do it, but at least then we'll have it on the table.
Sure, no, you've answered my main question then.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, wasn't trying to be evasive.
No, 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 I just wanted to get that and whether the net sufficient for now, but hopefully you might get some reaction.
Mister Mister Fennel.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Arthur Fennel, fifty eight Farm Road.
Just a second, Deshong, can you stop sharing for a second? Thank you, sorry. Please, please go ahead, Arthur.
I just, I I what I what I want to avoid and I think everybody wants to avoid is. Not having enough time for everybody to to provide all full and fair. Responses and have as fulsome a record as possible so that the ZBA can make the best decision. Is it possible to? Request or require the developer to put all final documents into the record, you know, in the next week? Or or something like that so that we're not bumping up against the next meeting, which is the last meeting on the twenty sixth. And there isn't sufficient time for other people to provide their responses. We just, there needs to be more than a more than a week or more than two weeks, probably even more than a month at this point with these complicated issues. And if there could be some timeline, you know, beyond which he can't go, I think that would be very helpful to the board and to the community. Thank you.
Okay, there's a couple of different questions today. I'll be trying to unpack them and see if I can see if I can answer them. In general, the ZBA cannot say unless it's in our regulations and otherwise consistent with forty B. They'll shalt give us documents A, B, and C when we dictate you to give them to us. In general, that's not within our powers. But part of the negotiation is. If time is up and they haven't provided certain things we need, that's going to hurt them in their decision. They might get turned down, they might get conditions they don't like. And if they haven't provided materials, that hurts them. So that's that's part of the negotiation, part of the dance. It is not obvious to me that the twenty sixth will be the last meeting. That is the current expiration of the of the latest extension. Whether or not the developer team wants to talk tonight about a further extension, we'd be glad to do so, but I I don't think it's important. It's. Fair for us to try to force them into one tonight.
Well, yeah, okay. So I I'm sorry. So I I mean, I I appreciate that that if the developer doesn't put all the documents in by the deadline, that that gets held against him. But I think there should also be sufficient time or could be held again, but however you want to phrase it. But there should be sufficient time for. The community and other boards and committees to respond to those, not that they're in the record at the eleventh hour. They're at the record, you know, in the record in sufficient time to allow other people to respond to them. And so those responses also can get in the record by the end of the end of the hearing.
Right, but 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 the fact is that tonight's the fifth. And the twenty sixth is three weeks away. And whether or not that's enough time i- i- is is a fair issue for discussion. But it's not completely slamming. It's it's not like bringing something in on the fifth and saying I want it to decision by the sixth.
Sure, understood.
So so we'll we'll be having that discussion. Daryl Beardsley, you're next.
Uh, yeah, sounds like this is the case, but I just want to verify that. We will have the board of health will have access to the peer reviewer for assistance with. The A O I analyses, nitrogen loading.
Not sure that's right. The peer reviewer works for us and only for us. If if you have something that you wish for them to look at, you could certainly. Request that we have them look into it. You'd want to copy Bob on that to make sure we weren't going outside our rules of, you know, what we can use the peer reviewer to do. But I I I don't think I can honestly tell you, Daryl, that. The Board of Health has access to the peer reviewer in certain some sort of direct way. They have, you have to work through us. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. But but the funds have been approved for that task.
I think we do have, I think we do have. Funds in in the budget for that, Steve.
Yes, we have, we have funds. We we just did a. You know, recently we just did a, you know, change order on that. So we do have some funds, but you know, it's. We still have to review the the stormwater and and we still have a lot to review though. So. I think if we could get, if we could get comments from the Board of Health, I think that would be very helpful and kind of, you know, finalizing what what. They would like us to look at.
Okay.
Mister Murchison, I think you're next.
Yeah, so Rick, I just wanted to make a comment on the kind of the timeline issues because I think people are getting a little bit caught up in timeline. I want very much for people to have the chance to review things. I I don't have an expectation that I give you something today and. You have to finish the review of it in three or four days. That's unreasonable. My concern more on a timeline perspect, and so therefore. Whenever we give you the last piece, which we believe is stormwater. Then we'll have some, we'll agree on some reasonable period of time. For you all to do that analysis and we'll make sure you have everything that you want, that you've asked for. It's on our best interest to do that. Where where I have concern, Rick, is that. On and and you kind of could read between the lines in my email. There are a lot of issues where I feel like we've given you everything. In some cases, several meetings ago, and and I don't feel like they've been resolved. So what I don't want to do or what I don't think is fair to us as the applicant. Is that, you know, we get to three weeks from now. And, you know, all the issues that we stopped talking about several meetings ago come back up and then we're out of time, right? So my idea was that. I want to know, do you have everything you need on on water? Do you have everything you need? On public safety, on traffic, all of these things. And we can kind of put those away, if you know what I mean. And then we can focus these last few weeks on septic and stormwater. But everyone should be assured, we're not going to give you the stormwater report and then say, okay, we're done in a week. Thank you very much, right? We're 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 reasonable. We want you to have a good look at this. And we can talk about, Rick, you tell me what, after we give you the stormwater, what do you think you need? We we don't have to have that discussion tonight.
Right, right, right. Well, but 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 you're raising raising a fair point, which is where are we on those other topics?
Yes.
And 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 I'll I'll ask my my board members to. Cor- correct me if they disagree. But the way I see this process is during the hearing, we gather data. Opinions from the developer team, from from the from the peer reviewer, from interested. Parties from other expert boards, everybody, and we just put that all in a big. Box or a big bin of the data. And 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 so after the hearings closed, we can't ask for more data. After the hearings closed, we, the board, then have to wrestle with, how do we weigh various bits of data? Do we think the peer reviewer had a better end of the stick on this argument? Do we think that a developer did? And then we come up with our decision and 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 whatever conditions might be in it. So in terms of raw data. My sense, board members, is that we have what we need on traffic. That we have what we need on. Site layout and public safety. That we have what we need on water supply. We haven't agreed on what we're going to do with it. And that we have what we need on site control. Again, we haven't decided which way to go on those things. Gentlemen, how how do you how do you feel about my thoughts on the line between data we gather and and how we finally rule on things? Jonathan, you're muted.
Well, Rick, I agree with what you just said about what we have data on and what we need data for. And we are in that process of collecting data and I appreciate that the applicant. Realizes that we're going to need time that that these. The issue of. Hydrogen loading and. Stormwater are very important to us and and. Complicated issues that our peer reviewer needs to. Like give us good information on, might take some time.
Zach.
I agree. I I think this is a fact gathering exercise and. So far, I think we are on the right track. I think that, you know, once the hearing is closed, we can. Can evaluate.
Okay, great, thank you. Todd?
Yeah, I'm I'm not going to repeat what was just said, but yeah, I would agree.
All right, so Mister Murchison, is that something, at least something of a responsive answer to your question?
Uh, yeah, so it sounds like you're in agreement that we're pretty much, you you have everything you need. On everything except.
In in those topics.
And septic. And and from our perspective, you now have everything on stormwater. But any follow up questions you have, we're happy to work with you on them, of course. But we believe we've given you everything promised.
You 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 don't mean stormwater, you mean.
I meant septic, excuse me, yes, yeah.
Okay, and 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 for people listening in, just because we think we might have everything we need, the hearing is still open. If somebody has the latest, greatest analysis or argument on why we should use. Public water supply or private water supply, the hearing is still open. You can send that in. You know, if 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 it's thoughtful and relevant, we'd we'd be interested to see it. It's only when the hearing closes that you can't come in and say, wait, I've got a great idea about the septic or the stormwater that you have to consider because then then the hearing is closed. Okay. I would like to, with the members of my fellow board permission, move that we continue the hearing for Farm Road Homes to. February twenty sixth at seven P M. I believe that's again on Monday. Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded to continue the hearing to February twenty sixth. Any further discussion? Hmm, I don't see any. Okay, all in favor. Sarah, you're not, you're not, you're not a a party to this. Sorry, this is for the board to decide. Okay, so moved and seconded to continue to February twenty sixth. Do it by roll call, all in favor, I, no backvotes, I.
Bitch, I.
McBride, we need you mute, unmuted.
McBride, I.
Mister Labby.
Labby, I.
Okay, all right. So, so we're, so we're continued. Yes, Sarah. Uh, you're muted now too.
Gee, I could see myself. Anyway, uh, thank you. I just wanted to be clear that I understood you correctly that the um conversation about a public water supply is not off the table.
Correct, it's not off the table. Uh, uh, what I was trying to say to uh Mr. Murchison and his team is that he should not expect our board to come back from and say, wait, we want twenty-eight new studies on public water supply versus private water supply in addition to the data you gave us.
Okay, thank you.
That, that, that's, that's kind of not where we're, where we're sitting right now. Okay. All right, so it's seven fifty-one P M. We're moving on to Greenwood Homes. Uh, a lot to talk about there. Um, I know that the neighbors uh have sent in letters. They had some uh concerns. Um, I'd like to ask the Board of Health a question, just to make sure I tracked the the notes correctly. Um. Daryl, in, in, in terms of your back and forth on the septic system layouts and whether the right papers have been submitted the right way and the well offsets were shown correctly and stuff. Is, is it your understanding that the most recent submission uh meets with what your board was expecting?
Uh. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The lot lines, you know, they're not final and we haven't had final word from Conservation Commission, but we have put that in recommendations for maybe you to address, so.
Okay, fine.
Can, can, and, and I think. Can I just comment for one second on the lot?
Yeah.
Um, so uh we expect to have the uh, uh, survey, a, a, a boundary survey, which is the, you know, latest and greatest uh done within days and we'll have that to you um when it's available. But it's, it's any day now. It's, it's underwritten by the senior folks at this point. And we don't anticipate it will change things, you know, by more than inches. So it's really a non-issue.
Okay. Um. One of the issues that was raised by neighbors and others is the relationship between the Washington Street project and this project. Um. Uh, one of the neighbor letters uh cited various uh phasing rules. Um, and Mr. Murchison pointed out correctly, correctly in this case that um not all phasing rules for all different types of regulatory regimes apply across the board. For example, the phasing rules under MIPA do not necessarily apply to uh phasing under um forty B. Um. There is, Mr. Haverty, a, 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 an issue of um whether or not this is a, whether or not Washington Street will be deemed a related application, capital R, capital A, under the, uh, under the regulations. Well, you shake your head no.
Chairman, the related the related application uh provision has to do with projects that have less than ten percent affordable housing. So that, that would not be applicable in this instance.
Well, um, okay, uh, you can certainly, cer- cer- certainly write it up, it, 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 and we'll see what the neighbors say about it. I don't think it's the biggest, biggest issue in the world. Um. What is the, the development team's position in terms of whether you, whether and how much you have to discuss the cumulative impacts of these projects?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think with regards to the Greenwood project, I, I don't think that we need to discuss anything with regard to Washington Street. If at some point it's determined either because of the Wetlands Protection Act requires some sort of a um, you know, phasing review, or if it's, if it's MIPA or if that might be applicable. Um, that would be done as part of any approval process for the Washington Street, which again, as I noted in my email to you earlier today, you know, I, I think is the more impactful of the two projects anyways.
Sure.
Um, but, but if at some point it's determined that there needs to be a review of the two projects together, that would properly be done in the review of the second project. Um, and, and that could take into account anything that needs to be taken into account. And if there is some sort of you know, state requirement, you know, whether it be wetlands, whether it be MIPA, that would prevent us from being able to move forward on the other project. Um, you know, based on those cumulative effects, that would still allow us to move forward on the Greenwood project alone.
Okay, uh, and, and I hear what you're saying. But um MHFA in the January ninth, twenty twenty-three project eligibility letter for, for I think this project um said, you must be prepared to discuss the cumulative impacts. That you must be a, ability to discuss the ability to comply with the town's wastewater uh, uh, requirements. And uh, and, and that was appropriate because it was being done by an affiliate of the developer, so.
I, I think that's.
MHFA sort of went, went the other way than you do.
No. I mean, I think if we're talking about the cumulative, that they're talking about the Washington Street project, not the Greenwood.
Or they're talking about the cumulative effect of four homes, Rick. No.
I mean, that.
You, 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 the, the, the letter speaks for itself. I s- I suggest you read it. Um, because it, it clearly talked about both projects and then that you should be in, in the context of this room, prepared to ad- address the cumulative effect, so. Um, I, I, I simply point that out as something that was directed by your authorizing agency. Um, okay. I know that the neighbors, I think, had a presentation. Um, is there someone who wanted to speak?
I, I don't know that. This is Meredith Westlowski, thirty-four Greenwood Street. I don't know that anything beyond, unless somebody else has an opinion different than mine, needs to be submitted at this moment.
Okay, um, the, the reason why uh, that's important is that unlike Farm Road, Greenwood Street will close tonight. And to the extent a, a number of people in their letters talked about concerns under the Reynolds versus Stowe case. And the key to the Reynolds versus Stowe case is, and I'm quoting the case, evidence that one or more adjacent private wells will have elevated nitrate, nitrogen levels. That's the standard. Um. And if the neighbors feel that the materials you've submitted tonight uh, or submitted uh by email during the day today uh are are your case essentially on that issue? Um, that's perfectly fine. That's up to you guys. But, but if you're, but if you're going to make a case that you think that the, the, the way these houses are cited, the sizes of them, their room counts or whatever, um are going to be an elevated nitrogen level problem for adjacent wells, now's the time to speak up.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I, I'll, I'll speak since I've been the most vocal. I don't I, I do think that there's a bigger elephant in the game than that. That is really where, where people's concerns lie.
I'm sorry, that, that, that broke up a little bit. Uh, are you saying that the, the bigger concern is what happens when the other, other, uh, ass, other, the larger project comes online?
Yes, phase two, yes.
Got it. All right, um, Ms. Moore?
Hi, Rick. Thank you. I just had a um clarifying question. Would the Z B A be able to condition the Greenwood Street projects on, you know, kind of a, a broader look at the combined project if in fact that was necessary or needed down the road? Would that be inappropriate? Um, you know, way to cover the nitrogen because the nitrogen load, obviously the math, as we just learned, is going to be very different when you make it a bigger parcel and a bigger project.
Um, that's a, that's a, that's a very smart question. Um. Mr. um Haverty would say, no, we can't. Um, and it's not obvious to me that he's correct.
You want actually hear my response, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, I would do, yeah, but, but speak for yourself, much better than my guesses.
I, I would not say uh out of hand that that is incorrect. Um, it certainly, if there is either a, a state rule or a local bylaw that we've requested a waiver from that you're considering whether or not to grant, that would be a consideration that you could take into, into account. And theoretically could issue a, a decision containing a condition requiring it. Um, again, it, but it has to be either based upon a state uh, state law, in which case it should be a condition that states um, you know, that we are required to comply with that state law if applicable. Um, and if it's a local bylaw, then that's a matter of you making a determination whether or not to grant a, a requested waiver.
Okay, good. That, that, that's, that's, that's a good, fair and more clear a- and, and legally uh precise reformulation. I adopt it. Thank you. Um, so i- i- translating from legalese to uh, to, 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 to plain English, Mary, maybe. Maybe we could do it. Fair, Paul? Okay, Tia Wallack?
Hi, uh, Tia Wallack, twenty-nine Greenwood. I just not to divert the conversation about nitrogen in the water, but could we go back to the cumulative impact and that MHFA letter? And I, I just want to make sure we understand that the hearing closes tonight. The letter clearly stated that the recommendation was to look at the acreage again, all eighteen acres on the site that include the three halls and the forty units sure room apartment buildings, including after periods of extreme perci- precipitation. And that the forward-looking planning for storm warning features with climate change in mind is strongly recommended. So with the cumulative impact of the two projects, which I think is clear in the letter, and with the hearing potentially closing tonight, what's that going to mean for your recommendations? And has anything been done to address the concerns for the letter since it was issued about a year ago?
Okay, um, I think I understand the question. Let me try to rephrase it and see if I got it right. Uh, which sounds like it's a question more to Bob Murchison or maybe to us, the board. Given that a year ago MHFA in the project eligibility letter said show us, the developer should show the ability to meet the town's wastewater uh treatment requirements and should be prepared to discuss the cumulative impacts with the other project. Um. What has been done about those so far? T, is that a fair pre-characterization?
Yeah, I, I would say it's two-part. What has been done and if nothing, what does that mean for the expiration of the hearing period?
Okay, well, that, that, that's a couple of different points. Um, uh, one is uh Bo- Bob will have the decision tonight as to whether to extend the hearing period or not. And that is a matter of it, it's not, it's not ipso dixit whether he feels like it, but, but it's not something we can control. It's something he should be guided by and has been by his own enlightened self-interest. What's in the best interest of the project? Um. Bob or, or DeShawn or anyone from your team, wh- what do you think, what do you feel you have done about those two issues in the context of Greenwood Street?
Uh, Bob, you want me just quick? Technically, I won't. I, I, I definitely appreciate a previous concern about any impact or cumulative or single. As we presented through our, our project review, and we have cited the four houses and the, the most impact, so we get to looking at it, it sounds like it's the nitrogen. So I don't know the, uh, I understand the global warming, weather changes is going to give you more rain. So then if there's more rain means that concerns to the nitrogen will be less because it's going to dilute more. Uh, for as far as the septic, we comply whether a cumulative or individual for the house lots is all in compliance with uh applying Title V as well as the town nitrogen requirements for acreage. So as that's what I can give you as a fact of the design and whether you're going to including that later on with the Washington or not, because Washington uh, if like say, if one plus one equal two and so, or one plus two equal three. So right now we are considered this one, if the one is confirmed, it's there. And if you have a two later on for Washington and that number have to be confirmed as two, not three. So otherwise if one plus uh three will equal four, so I agree with that perspective as a cumulative impact. But at this point, I a- addressed to the best of my professional judgment and opinion and design, facts and I know. And from the sighting is downgraded from all the buddy neighbors. And uh so, and they're set quite far from their wells. And if so, so impact to them, as far as I can see, of course, people can argue, say, you can uh go through the fractures, that, that is not in the regulation. And uh so that kind of impact, nobody can a hundred percent guarantee, but in my knowledge from the treatment process and of the septic systems. So in order to that, that the nitrogen really get into small cracks to one specific well, it's a, it's a long shot kind of impact even anybody in the world to be ident- identifiable at this point. And uh there's any specific regulations and the performance standards that will require us to do so. Thank you.
The, the other thing, Rick, just very quickly is, I'd just like to remind people that, and, and you know this, Rick, because you've reviewed the waivers that I, the, the more specific waivers that you asked me to uh uh, call out for you. Um, you'll see that the uh, the, the specific waivers for the Board of Health for septic systems are almost, I mean, they're extremely small. Um, it turns out, we didn't realize it at the time, but it turns out that we could have built market, all market rate homes on this property. Um, by the time we figured that out, we just decided to go forward and provide the um the uh affordable home, you know, that's just what we're doing. Um, but the waivers we're looking for here are extremely light. Um, my guess is you've never seen a forty B with this little in terms of waiver impact.
It, it, it's a, it's certainly a contained set of waivers. How about, how about I agree with you on that?
Sure.
Tia, Tia Wallack, you still have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. So, DeShawn, I think it, I don't, I'm not a scientist, so I'm going to try to paraphrase what you said, but it seemed to me you were responding with respect to the information and testing that you've done on the four homes and the Z B A is asking for us to present scientific evidence on risk of nitrogen contamination into the water, which feels a bit like we're being asked to prove a negative at this point because the Washington Street project has just kicked off. The, the hearings haven't started about it. And what we can see is that there's a request in the letter that cumulative impact be looked at. And everything that it seems you just said, as I understand it, is you looked at Greenwood, you will look at Washington, you expect Washington to have one plus one equals two, not one plus one equals three. But we're being asked to have the hearing closed on Greenwood tonight. And it seems to me there's an open question on the cumulative impact, which is hypothetical, and we can't prove that at this point until the Washington Street's further along. That's just how it feels to me from a non-scientific view. And that's what I kind of like to flush out a bit more tonight if we have the time.
Right, okay, and, and, and I think we do have the time. It's one of the reasons I wanted to try to allocate extra time to Greenwood so that to the extent that people had concerns, they could be, they could be, they could be on the table. Um, DeShawn Wang?
Yes, I, uh, Tia, I, it's definitely, as I'm trying my best, if I cannot make my case as engineer, my responsibility, ethics is to project right and design it right to the best education and experience and everything to me, to, to make it not just for this project, for hundreds project I have done in my thirty years career. And the septic system to this size, I have done eighty thousand gallon per day system design. So this is not uh compared, it's like a ten percent, you know, one-tenth of it. But I want to try to see if I can make it the cumulative concern a little bit easier to understand to, to, to our, so both sides. So because uh I just don't want to using that term as a turn to, to sort of making scare myself or say scare yourself so to a, to a point you have a sleepless night. So I, we all want to have a good sleep, you and me, right? At the night, I have peace. So let me put it this way. So cumulative, I'm still trying to use the simple math. So if I have a one plus two equal three, that's, the three is the total impact. Right? So one is impact. So if I'm using that one as the Greenwood. So if the Greenwood proof confirmed that impact one is confirmed. So that means if I take that impact out from the equation left side and I can take it on the right-hand side, one out confirmed. So it means I, uh, the only thing I left is two equal two. But that two equal two, we don't know because we haven't seen any design. It could be end up is two point five, larger than two, then we have a problem. We have to making sure the engineering design at that phase is correct. Otherwise it will exceed the standards. So as far as the accumulative impact per se in the future for Washington Street, so looking back over here, I, if, unless you have a specific concern in our design or site in every aspect uh, which will impact. uh, which will impact the assessment of that impact. So otherwise, listen, I don't see any point, we need, we, uh, this, I see it will be, uh, will change my design perspective down the road for Washington. Uh, in the accumulated way, in my understanding, because we comply with the nitrogen budget, just like your house, everybody in the neighborhood. And that's one. And second is, if I see any neighbors well nearby and you have a very specific water quality issues and the concerns at this moment, you can say, look, I already have this concern. And I don't know if this impact of the water quality I'm suffering is from where. If you have that system here, I definitely will a hundred percent uh, uh, understand and also will definitely feel will need to look into it. Say, if I have this four homes here and plus another uh, on the Washington Street side, what will impact from the perspective, not just from the Greenwood, but also from the Washington's perspective. Then when, no, when we do the Washington design for the septic and the wastewater treatment there, we really have to watch in in a much more uh, just as, you know, as I did in the farm row, we could go with the system with a twenty-five uh, milligram system, but we went uh, just one mile further, we used the nineteen, because I just don't want to have things, uh, we have to come back to to making the system change, much more expensive. And uh, and so fire things are are still in the process of design. So if I don't know if I made that a little bit uh, 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 clear from from like in you putting in the, in my shoes to thinking of the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Meredith Wizlowski.
Yeah, I I am, I'm just looking, this is just at like a friendly, friendly neighbor, neighbor comment. If you look at the southmost tip of the lot closest to thirty-four Greenwood, whereas there's the quick downslope from the road, I can tell you that the owner of that house will need to have some sort of stormwater help in that corner of the property, just because of the way that water flows. Even with, with not even serious rain. So just, just to make sure that that's in the record, but that is a tiny, tiny detail. That would be somewhere where a stormwater assessment would be quite helpful for you.
Okay, um, and with respect to the project on the table, the four units as proposed, Dejean, do you have a stormwater plan for that? And does it deal with that corner of that lot she just mentioned?
Yeah, the intuitive, I know we did all the stormwater for us, uh, to the, to the standard I know apply, but I want to take a quick open that plan, so I can see what, uh, I I know where she's talking about, but I just need to make sure.
Hang on for just a second, and maybe once you find it, if you could put it up just so we can see it. Yes, go ahead, Bob.
While he's doing that, Rick, um, I'd like to address Meredith's question from an email earlier today on on Greenwood. She had asked about our request for a waiver to chapter twenty-five uh, of the town uh, bylaws, I believe it is. Um, and I'd just like to let her know, you know this already, Rick, um, but it's a waiver that is procedural only. We do, we believe we're in full compliance with chapter twenty-five, uh, mostly because chapter twenty-five and the state are the same. Um, but we believe we're in compliance. Um, it's a procedural, uh, requ- uh, a request for a procedural waiver, which if you need more, uh, you can go to Paul on that, but uh, you know, we're, we're compliant uh, with town stormwater.
Okay. While while Dejean's pulling this up, do you think you can find that in the waivers and be ready to pull it up in a minute?
Is this a plan, right?
I can pull it up and read it.
Okay, yeah, but you you just, I just want people to be able to see, go ahead, Dejean.
Okay, so so this is our lot one, and this is thirty-four Greenwood. And so, uh, if I'm looking, if you are looking at here, so the majority of our water is uh, shed into our rain garden more away from thirty-four. And then in addition, if you look at our driveways, if you, so we have two feet of crushed stone and two feet deep stone trenches to intercept the runoff even from our driveway. If you're looking into all the neighbors or in the, in in the town one, I can, I I'm not betting, uh, we, this kind of a single family house setting. I'm not saying we're beating everybody, but at least on the driveway reduction runoff, I haven't seen many, okay? So then, so what is the impact to the neighbors? I want to point it out to you for the grading. It's going to have a valley kind of uh, uh, channel. The lowest pretty much follows the property line. So any water coming here, if you see the neighbors water shedding that, the contours, the water, uh, if you, if you're thinking of uh, any water, if you look and say, how do I know where the water goes? So the contours, they're basically perpendicular to all the contours. So this water flowing toward the property line and all where water compare with there. And and so this grading was more parallel wise. Maybe a little skewed toward the property, but very little, if you compare with the neighbors. So from that perspective, the, the, uh, the common uh, interface line and compare with always grading design, we have much less, even in the future, there's a tremendous rain increase. We don't expect uh, significant uh, impact on the neighbor. So I don't know if I made it clear enough.
Obviously, I wasn't even thinking about my own lot. I was thinking about that lot.
I appreciate your concern for you. You're a good neighbor. You're you're a good neighbor for, for, and and obviously they are the closest one to downgrade and and you thinking of them, if they are not here, you speak for them. I have a high respect for 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 that neighborhood, uh, uh, met, you know, kindnesship, uh, 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 on on dealing with it, but I'm, I I definitely happy to.
Especially also know that we have, um, our uh, gutter collection goes through one of the corrugated black tubes under our driveway and comes out on that side as well. So it's not just going to be the rainwater from the street and the rainwater from our second driveway or side driveway, but it's also going to be rainwater coming from our gutters on the house, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a perfectly, uh, so if you're looking at it, even though I didn't know it, so for all our grading, as a, as a design engineer, I'm obligated to make sure I design it for the, uh, for the future homeowner and also not impact negatively to only neighbors on our side, so.
Yeah, you might just give that a second look, just to to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Well, well, yeah, we we will take it, you know, quick ride off there if you have your pipe coming out. Just probably, yeah, we we'll get, get you an answer to, to make sure if your pipe coming crossing to our side, I I I do want to know if in the future, that pipe may need to relocate it to, to avoid anything we have to do, so.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Rebecca, if you can just hang for just a half a second. Um, Bob or or, um, or Mr. Haverty, can you, can you put up that waiver just so people can see it?
I can close mine.
I, to be honest, Rick, I don't know how to put it up. I can read it to you. Would you like me to read it to you? It's very short.
No, let's, uh, let let, well, tell what, let's listen to Rebecca and I'll, I'll see if I can find it.
It's two sentences.
Yeah, exactly. It's not much.
Why don't you send it to Rick again, so he doesn't have to search for it?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, although the, the problem is, I I'm, I'm now outside my firm's systems, Paul. And as, as you may know, through the miracle of Citrix and firm security, it'll take me, I might be able to find it faster on the firm web, on the, on the town website.
Okay, I hope if you can email it to me, I probably can put it up quicker, easy.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Bob, why don't you email it to Dejean and he can put it up? Uh, Rebecca, you've been waiting patiently. Rebecca, you're muted, I think. Or we can't hear you for one reason or another.
He's not muted.
Maybe she's got no mic. Okay, well, while she's wrestling with that, look, may I ask, um, uh, the peer reviewer and Board of Health, um, given that Greenwood, it seems likely to close tonight. Do you have any further information for us? Recommendation, suggested conditions? Anything? Oh, here's Julie Dreyfus.
Hi, Rick, Julie Dreyfus, Board of Health. Um, at our last hearing, I had brought up a question regarding deed restriction. And I had noted at the time that the board had not seen the room plans or the floor plans for either of the market rate or affordable homes. Since then, we've uh, seen the plans and we have a few concerns that we'd like to flag for your board.
Okay, please, please, please do so. Now's the time.
Now's the time. Um, so in the case of the affordable home, it looks great. There are nine rooms in this home. The uh, basement and the third floor are not depicted in the plans, and therefore we presume them to be unfinished.
That is correct.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And so that home looks consistent with the four-bed septic system that we have approved. In the case of the market rate home, there are two finished rooms in the basement, along with a full bathroom. The first and second floor are typical what you would expect to see. And the third floor has a finished uh, room along with a full bathroom. And so that is where we have our concerns. Um, both of those rooms, there's a room in the basement and a room in the third floor that under Title V would be considered a bedroom. And so seeking a deed restriction in this case would be an attempt to go around Title V, which certainly is permitted, but it is not entitled. And so go ahead.
How many under your Board of Health scoring or under Title V, if they're different? How many rooms would the market rate, how many bedrooms would the marker rate house, house be scored as? Five bedroom, six bedroom?
At least five, potentially six.
Five to six, okay.
Okay.
And 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 just before you keep going, the proposal on the table and the request and the waivers is that the market rate houses be deed restricted down to four. So keep going, Julie.
Exactly.
Yes.
Um, and so our, our concern here is, uh, when you look at other forty Bs that have been deed restricted in town, looking at the fields or looking at fifty-nine North Main. In those cases, those rooms were not automatically already standing a bedroom. They required some amount of conversion, some construction. For the lofts at fifty-nine North Main, they did not have privacy, walls would have had to have been constructed, doorways would have had to have been added. They were not an automatic given. In the case of the proposed market rate homes here, anyone could start using these either the basement floor or more likely the third floor as a bedroom space. And that becomes an issue because in the case of these lots, they're at their absolute nitrogen loading capacity. So, uh, and they're also at their absolute design flow capacity. So, uh, Title V allows four hundred and forty gallons, gallons per day and forty thousand square feet, which is exactly what these lots are. In the event that that amount of, uh, effluent is exceeded, you're going to get ineffective treatment and filtration in the wastewater. And then that puts a risk to the down gradient sensitive receptors. And the same, a similar thing happens for effluent. So if you have too much flow going through a system, uh, it basically calls, causes premature failure, you get ponding, and you also get, um, same kind of issues down gradient. Um, and so this puts a risk to, in the event that these homes are used above four bedrooms in terms of volume of flow um, and amount of nitrogen that's put out to any of the wells that would be down gradient. And in particular, now having done a very quick review of the Washington property that was just recently put up, looking at where the proposed public water supplies are for that property. And the zone one is called out. There's also a, um, zone two interim wellhead protection area, which is at least another hundred feet out from where that is depicted. That line is getting extremely close to these lots. I don't know if it touches these lots, but it's very close to these lots. And in that case, you have the potential to have excess nitrogen coming from these, uh, homes if they're used in excess of what they're designed for, potentially contaminating that future well.
Okay.
So, Rick, may I address, uh, uh, Julie's concern?
Um, you may, um, can we take a? Yeah, no, go, go ahead. Please, please go ahead.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Rick. I appreciate it. Um, so Julie has suggested that the third floor bedroom uh, is, is her primary concern. Um, and what I will say about that is the bathroom, first of all, is outside of that room. And that room does not have a door. It's got a five-foot cased opening. It could be, it's either five feet or six feet cased opening. It's made to be an office space, Rick. In the, in the Zoom, you know, uh, remote work era, people want office spaces. And the problem with the Board of Health, um, uh, uh, way of of counting bedrooms is they call out any room above the first floor is a bedroom. Door, no door, wide open, no privacy. It's a bedroom under their count. And I looked at this and I, I actually originally honestly wanted a door there for an off, you know, for an office to have a door is appropriate. But I thought to myself, you know what, then people are gonna get worried that it's gonna be a bedroom. I redesigned it and I made a five-foot or six-foot cased opening into the room. And, um, it's, it's, it would take being remodeled, uh, to be used as a bedroom. Um, and, you know, this is completely, uh, compliant with Title V. Title V says if you're in violation of how we count things, um, and we'd need to really pour over, uh, Title V to see if it's not in compliance. But I came to you with the idea of the deed restriction, because then it's not this discussion we're having tonight. It's a deed restriction. It's taken care of. Um, specifically designed the room to not be a bedroom. No privacy.
Right, so, um, trying to, trying to well, let, let, let me take a shot, then then you can correct me, Paul. How's that? Sure. Um, um, wh- what's going on here is, um, there, there are elements of truth to what, or elements of, of accuracy uh, or of reality to what Julie is saying and what Bob is saying. Julie's point is that nitrates don't care if the room came out of something called a library, a den, a rec room, or what else? If there are people in there and they're flushing the toilets, that's what's gonna lead to the nitrates. Um, and and under Title V, the counting of bedrooms is how it gets administered. That's why bedroom counts wind up being so important. Um, Bob is correct that in, in some circumstances, one can, um, use a deed restriction, say, well, we won't use, we won't use more of these rooms than we're supposed to as, as, as bedrooms. And, uh, we, we've, we've done that on some forty Bs in town and that one of the live issues in in deed restriction, uh, jurisprudence is how much is as of right, how much is discretionary to the board? Can you say, well, I built a six-bedroom house, but I'm de restricting it down to two? Um, uh, certainly in the case of, I think, the fields and fifty-nine North Main Street, we let them, uh, de restrict some threes down to twos. So that, that's kind of where all this settles out, at least, at least in, in my view. Um, but Paul, you'll tell me what part of that I got wrong.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you got no, no part of that wrong. I just wanted to point out ultimately, this is a Title V issue and it'll get resolved as part of the Title V process.
Right, but we are the The Title V permit's already been issued.
So it's, I, I mean, if, if these have already been approved under Title V, it's, this is kind of a dead issue.
Well, e- e- except the, 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 um, Title V permits depended on you getting from us waivers down to four bedrooms that you've requested. And we haven't ruled on that.
The other thing, Rick.
It does all, it does all fit together.
The other thing, Rick, I would point out to you is that Title V assumes two people are living in each bedroom. So Title V assumes for Julie's purposes of people flushing toilets, that eight people are living in these homes, okay? Um, I
And and it might be a lower number is where you're going.
Uh, it could be, yeah, it could be less.
I'm with, I, I hear you. Um, Rebecca, um, you still nominally have your hand up uh, in an empty room, but you're also on your phone. Did you have something you wanted to say to us?
Yeah, sorry, the mic is just completely gone on my computer, so I'm in the other room on my phone because there was too much interference. Um, I had a point from the previous conversation as a citizen. My request to you is, is there any precedent and or could the zoning board um, request that monies, there be some financial remuneration for abutters whose wells are fouled in the future, because there's no turning back with private water supplies. These innocent bystanders, um, whose water is contaminated These innocent bystanders whose water is contaminated have no recourse. Is there a way for that to be included in the?
Well, it, it, it's, it's a fair question. I think what Mr. Merkison and Mr. Haverty will say is you don't have those rules ZBA for non forty B projects. And therefore you can't unfairly impose those same rules on me. For example, there, there's a big new house going up near me. It's a long way away. I'm not, I'm not worried about him, him, him fouling my well. But by the way, I've had my well tested, just to be sure. It's always good practice. Every time something is going up near you, do that, please.
Except that they're not following the same rules because they're bypassing zoning for forty B. So actually that contradicts your reasoning.
No, not necessarily, because the answer is they're allowed to.
By laws.
But they are allowed to by forty B. And I, you know, I don't like the statute. I didn't write it, but, but I am obliged to administer it. It, it gives them some free passes.
Right. So I'm just asking if there's been a precedent. Do you know as a real estate attorney, if there's ever been a precedent in a private water supply situation where public water supply is different? Because not only is it regulated by DEP, but there is the ability to have remuneration where with private water supplies, we have extremely wet geology. The homeowner has no property value and they can't drink their water. So what happens?
Right. And, and, and it's a fair question. And as, as, as you, as you hint, I have been a real estate lawyer for a longer period than forty years that I won't go into. But, and I, and I haven't seen what you're talking about. Doesn't mean it's never happened, but I, but I haven't seen it. To answer your question fairly. Boy, we got a bunch of hands up now. Okay, Deshaun.
I, I have the waiver.
Oh, great. Yeah, put it up, please. Let's get that out of the way. That'll be nothing burger. Put it up. Yeah. Actually, Mary Moore sent it to me too, but you, you, you're better at the screen sharing than I am. Please, please do so. So bottom line, Rebecca, I'm not confident that we could create such a condition and have it stand up.
Thanks.
Fair question. Okay, all right. Take us, take us where we are on the, on the waiver you were trying to point out. I think it was.
Down about three pages. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Little bit more. Yeah, you're, you're about there.
A little further.
Little bit further.
There we go.
One more page.
Twenty-one or twenty-five?
Twenty-five, twenty-five, Rick. Next one, next page.
All right, here we are. Yes. Okay, and Bob, I think your point was, yes, you were seeking a waiver of this by law, but you need to do exactly the same things under the state regs and you're glad to do so.
And we are, we believe we're compliant. Yes.
Okay. So I think that settles that issue. Deshaun, you can stop sharing that screen. And Daryl, I think you're next.
Okay, regarding Title V and bedroom determination, do remember that the equation that Title V uses is you take the total number of rooms divided by two and round down if necessary. So we're still talking about five bedrooms at a minimum, even by Title V. And the board in the past has often looked at rooms that can quite easily be cut off with a door and maybe a little adjustment for that width to the potential to become a bedroom is great for the third floor room. And we've tried to be cautious about that. And the designs for, for example, fifty-nine North Main were modified somewhat where they had relatively narrow entries into a room that could quite easily be cut off. So that's, that's one issue. You know, I might have to circle back. There was a UMass study done looking at how bedrooms were designated and comparing Massachusetts to elsewhere. And I found one comment and I was looking for the other one, but it says, when compared to other states, Massachusetts has one of the lowest gallons per bedroom per day requirement. And so that means that we are not attributing much to to what the residents in a bedroom would be generating. We're on the low end of the scale. And there's not any particular driving technical reason for that. And frankly, we have much more shallow depths to bedrock than many parts of the country. Other places are hundreds of feet to bedrock, hundreds of feet to groundwater where we've got a little skin of soil that we're dealing with here. Then I'll just leave it at that for the moment. See if I can find the other.
Thank you. Jennifer Bradley, I think you were next.
And so I have one question. And it is, what is the selling price for this one forty B on Greenwood? That will make it an affordable house, seeing as it is the same finish other than some of the kitchen units or something? And but same square footage. So what price would this sell at to make it an affordable house?
Bob, I'd be glad to have your answer to that one.
Sure. I don't know the exact number, Rick, but it's on the order of just over three hundred thousand dollars.
So substantially less than the other ones.
Yes.
And, and, and Bob, it, it, it's going to have those durable affordability restrictions that all of those houses have, where someone can't just buy it for three hundred and then flip it for a million the next day and pocket all the money.
Of course, yeah.
Right. Yeah. And I was, I was saying that more for Jennifer's benefit. There, there are financial handcuffs that go with these affordable houses.
Yeah, the value of the homes, the value of the homes track with the eighty percent median income number.
The rest is the same. So you have many people at three other houses buying for a market rate and next door to someone who buys it for three hundred thousand.
That, that is.
For how long? Is there a restriction on how long it's held?
Forever.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're unlimited life. So you can't just buy it for three hundred, hold it for five years and then flip it.
And by the way, just to clarify the answer to the question, the affordable home does not have the same number of finished square feet as the market rate homes, and they don't have the same finishes, both of which are appropriate within the forty B context.
Thank you.
Right. One, one of the handcuffs that forty B puts on Bob is he has to make the houses relatively similar. So you can make differences in finishes and things like that, but it can't be that, you know, the, the, the market rated houses are five times the size of, of, of the affordable one. So he, he's got some design handcuffs on him too. Julie Dravis, please.
That was a beautiful segue, Rick. So what I had two points to make. One, and this is just a practical question to the ZBA. The difference in finished square footage between the affordable home and the market rate home is two thousand square feet. And so I ask you, do you think is practical use? Does two thousand square feet make a difference in how you use a home? The second question or the second comment I would make, and this is more to what Mr. Haverty had commented on, is our typical process is when a building application comes in, we review that along with the septic and well. Because this is not the typical process, the board did not have these floor plans at the time of reviewing the septic plans. That's just a comment.
Okay. Well, let me try to answer the first question, which is a smart one, which is what happens to the extra square footage? And I'll give you the answer that we used for the, the fields and at fifty-nine North Main Street, where mostly in those cases, it was unfinished, big, open unfinished basements. And, and the, the people who bought them thought, wow, that's great. And now I'll finish off the basement. I'll put in a whole bunch of extra rooms. Answer is no, you're not going to, because that's gonna violate your deed restriction. Your, your, the deed restriction will write, will say that you can't finish off the basement.
And I wholly support that, Rick. I have no issue.
Yeah, it, it, and, and, you know, it's, it's usually not a developer problem. It's usually an own, first owner problem.
And we'll, but we'll, we'll be sure to tell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right.
But Rick, these spaces are finished. They're not, they're not potentially finished. They're not unfinished basements or unfinished third floors. These are, it's two thousand square feet of finished difference.
Okay.
Most of it's the, the upstairs, the third floor and the master bedroom. In other words, the master bedroom is much smaller in the affordable home. And the office space that I described earlier, the remote office space does not exist in the affordable home. The affordable home is exactly the same shell as the market rate home. It's just not as much square footage as finished. And this has all been vetted with mass housing. This is all completely typical of, of how forty Bs go.
And I'm, I'm sure that's true, but what I'm talking about is the amount of flow that will come into the system. And if the land has the carrying capacity to filter and treat that.
Yeah. And what I would say is that I'll just read the, the one sentence from Title V. It says, the applicant may design a system using design flows for a smaller number of bedrooms than are presumed in this definition, and that definition has to do with the room count you spoke to, by granting to the approving authority a deed restriction, limiting the number of bedrooms to the smaller number. So Title V has a way to do that. And what I would say, Rick, is that, you know, this is an issue. Offices are very much a part of houses in the suburbs these days. If you take this away from me, you're creating a significant economic issue. And I would just obviously ask you not to do that. Question.
Okay. So let me try to answer Julie's question in a little more, a little more of an attempt at plain English, which is the additional unfinished space in the affordable unit will lead to an incentive to try to cheat on the part of that homeowner. And we have to write the documents carefully to try to get them to not cheat. Is that a fair answer?
But to cheat, they would need to kind of have five bedrooms and have.
Yeah, exactly. By, by cheating, I mean people, instead of pulling a building permit and, 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 and telling us they, their, their brother-in-law is a contractor and someone goes by the next day and like, there's a bunch of kids in the basement. What's that about?
But Chris keeps a good eye on things, Rick. I know that.
He do, he does, he does. Okay, Mike Mahoney, I think you're next. But, but you're muted, sir.
There we go. Hi, Michael Mahoney, fifty-six Greenwood. I, I, some of the points have been, been made. I just wanted to reiterate. I think, you know, as a, as a neighborhood, we have, you know, meeting regularly very recently on this. And, and I just, I don't know if there's something, given the nature of where we are in the process, that could be said. I, I, as I've come into this, have become greatly concerned, I think to the point going back to that has been made on several times, that in the course of this process, we, we are unique in Sherburne given our private well status. And again, I'm not familiar with what the board can take into account here. And, and I'm certainly supportive of, of a lot of the, the, the development that we're, that we're, we're talking about. But I am concerned that if we are even in the process of creating these four homes, contaminating our wells, that you're, you are putting not just the neighborhood in jeopardy, but, but it, it reflects poorly on the town and becomes, becomes an issue. And so it's not that I'm suggesting, well, we just, we shouldn't have any development town. But more so that I, I would like to, again, I think the disadvantage that individual neighbors and neighborhoods have in this process is we're obviously sort of back on our heels initially. We don't have experts and lawyers and stuff. And we're trying to get as, as smart in this as possible in a very short period of time. So I do appreciate all the, all the discussion and, and particularly those who willing to put it into layman's terms for us. But as somebody who, who is downgrade from, from this development, and, and as it was raised earlier, I think that just the concern about this momentum happening and suddenly we've got a development that is going to potentially put a lot of people in a, in a bad way in terms of the wells. Where is the, the, it doesn't seem like the board has the power to, to suggest or, or create any recourse. But, but how do we, how do we tackle that? How do, how do we, you know?
Sure. Okay, fair, fair enough. And, and this gets back to what, what a number of your neighbors have cited and people cited in other things, which is the Reynolds versus Stowe case. Okay, Stowe, Massachusetts, a lot like Sherburne in a lot of ways, well, septic systems, all, all sorts of problems. And in that case, in 2015, the appeals court ruled that if there was evidence that the nitrate contamination from the new proposed forty B, if there was evidence that one or more adjacent private wells will have elevated nitrogen levels, that that was good grounds to turn down the project, to simply say no. And so the question is whether or not what you have here meets that standard. But right now, in terms of tools that the ZBA has in the drawer right now, where we have evidence like that, we can simply say no, go back, redesign the project, come, come in with something else. We do not, to, to my knowledge, and John Fitch and, and and, 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 and others are, are lawyers. And Zach, you can tell me if you're better, but I don't think the ZBA has the tool right now saying, wait, put up a ten million dollar fund to replace everybody's wells. I don't, I don't see that tool in the drawer for us to be able to use. So I'm just trying to be fair with people about what we can and can't do. Mr. Fitch?
Yeah, you're right. Can't do that.
First time today. It's only eight forty-seven.
No, no, no. Okay. Take into account the Washington Street.
Yeah, that, that's, that's gonna be a tricky one here for our decision. I agree.
Unquestionably.
Mary Moore.
Thanks, Rick. Just two super quick points. The first is I just wanted to agree with the comment that was made earlier about the Julie's good comment about the bedroom. And I think it's very unreasonable for us to expect that the single building enforcement officer can enforce all of these restrictions. I think with the number of new construction coming online, it's, it's a very, very busy job. So I doubt, you know, that this would be something that could reasonably be, be enforced. And then the second comment I just wanted to make really quickly was just to thank Jeannie Guthrie for her really good work, staying on top of getting everything posted on the website. I really appreciate it. And if there were emails and things that were exchanged recently, I know a lot of comments were made about emails that were exchanged. It would be great to see those as well if, if that's reasonable. So thank you very much, Jeannie.
They will go up. They'll go up tomorrow, Mary. I did receive some stuff tonight, so they'll go up tomorrow.
But Jeannie is, is an invaluable part of our process and, and the, the information flow she does is, is, is to everybody's benefit. So we thank you. Daryl Beardsley.
Okay, so I have the same excerpt from the Title V regulations, three, ten, CMR, fifteen point zero, zero, two, under the definition of, of a bedroom. And Bob just read that about the applicant may design, may design a system using design flows for a fewer number of bedrooms on multiple occasions at conferences and direct conversations with mass DEP people. They've been very clear about what that was intended to mean. And that DEP lawyers specifically included the word may because later on it talks about granting to the approving authority a deed restriction. However, that's entirely conditional to the acceptance of that deed recording by the approving authority. And DEP has been very clear about that, has stated it number of occasions over years. So just, I guess you will be the approving authority in this case, ZBA.
Lucky, yes.
And so it's unfortunate that we did not have the floor plans when we were evaluating for Title V compliance and we didn't. evaluating for Title V compliance, and we didn't realize that there were so many rooms. So our error to feel the pressure of time to move ahead with that without having had that. Also, besides the differences of the.
Hang on, Daryl, just, just, just pause for half a second. Jeannie, are the plans with the rooms shown on them in our record?
They've been on the website since August, Rick.
Okay, that, that, that's a good answer, Bob. Julia, the ones you, Julia, the ones you looked at from August?
We have looked at construction set diagrams. I don't know what the date on them is.
They were posted in August with our original application, Rick.
To clar, to clarify, Rick, the, I, I wasn't the one to ask for them, but the administrator and the agent had repeatedly asked for them, and no answer was given. We were not directed to the website that they were posted.
Well, can, can someone send them to Jeannie or me now, just so we have them if we're going to close the hearing tonight in our record?
They're on the website. They're, they're right there.
They are.
Well, while Jeannie's looking, Daryl, please go ahead, because I interrupted you.
They are posted there now. That's how we've made this determinate.
Okay, if they're there, they're there. That's all I wanted. Great, thank you.
Every file and, and found them. So and she's correct that we did ask, came up at many meetings, can we see the floor plans? Can we see the floor plans? So anyway, we moved ahead on the assertion that it was only four bedrooms. So the other rooms, again, the others, the projects that have had this, the, the spaces were very clearly lofts. They were wide open to the area, some overlooked cathedral ceilings elsewhere. Also with condominiums, people have argued that people are, have a heightened awareness to how many people might be living there because they view it as pressure on the services that everyone is sharing. So I think there could be also a different dynamic when you've got private homes. I'm also wondering, I know that the idea with forty B is that the affordable units do not stand out as different from the other units. I agree with that principle, but I'm wondering how identical something must be because when you build an enormous the room over the garage is quite large, unfinished space, but looking quite ready to be finished when time and resources permit. It's, it sets up expectations for people, or, and we've seen this over and over with the basement rooms in the other projects in town is they were unfinished, but they're attractive spaces. Some of them were walkout. And people have continually want to finish that, but we have more of a tradition in Sherburne of with certain conditions, won't go into those specific ones now, but of allowing deed recordings to basement rooms. But something on the upper floor, and again, DEP talks about not just rooms, but they refer to bedrooms above the ground floor, rooms above the ground floor typically being regarded as bedrooms. So we're not that unique in that in Sherburne.
That's right. And, and, and you're right on, on almost all of that. I'm only laughing because I was the guy who had the big room over the garage for twenty years. And I always went, wanted to go to finish it off. And every time I went to finish it off, like, nope, it's gonna be a bedroom. You're gonna have to dig up, you know, you have to put a new septic system and you didn't have room for like, so it was where we hung windsurfing sails and practiced golf swings and just had to stay a big empty room.
Rick, just to, just to clarify, the room that we're talking about, that I described as remote office space with a five-foot cased opening looks out into a stairwell, which is open to below. I mean, there is just zero privacy.
Yeah, I, 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 I get the design. And while I haven't seen it in yours, I, they, they, they did some similar things in, in, in Heritage.
And the other.
Again, trying to do the same thing of, of, well, here's a little space, but it's not easily made into a room.
The other comment I would make about Daryl's thought is that of, of the, of the home, have the, the affordable home having unfinished space. I would love to build a smaller shell. It would cost me a lot less money to do that. But I'm required by mass housing to build the shell that looks from the street indistinguishable from the, from the other three homes. And so I'm, I'm forced to do it that way.
Right, I, 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 I get that. And I, and I've tried, tried to say that is that, that those are part of the handcuffs on Bob for doing this type of project, is he can't just have the little tiny shack next to the, next to the big ones.
Just going back, the third floor room is still a room, and it's still attached to the room.
Right, right, understood, understood. Okay, Pete, Hebert, Herbert?
Hebert, yeah, thanks. No, I appreciate it. Sixteen Old Orchard in Sherburne, and I appreciate all the concerns around the septic, the groundwater, all valid concerns. I just don't hear much concern about the influx into the school system. And I just want to wonder if that's been, as a cautionary tale, I grew up in Natick, lived in Hoppington for fifteen years, and moved here specifically due to the explosion after Weston Nurseries developed their seven hundred acres at a rate where McDowell sold the town a bill of goods that there will never be any no, there will never be too many kids to overpopulate the school system. So if we're talking seventy-two units, a couple of kids per unit, that is bigger than, I have twins at Pine Hill. I have a daughter at DS High School. And if we're talking about an influx of a hundred and fifty kids and we're bigger than one class, each class.
Okay, so I, 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 I have to stop you there for two reasons. The, 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 the good news is, and this is a little bit tongue in cheek, the, the fact that the developer at Weston Nurseries may have snookered the town, that's the first time in the history of real estate development that's happened. Not. Second, the reason why we're not talking about influx on schools is because we're not allowed to. It's a, it's a verboten topic for us. I mean, it's, it's an invalid condition.
Drastically alter the, the outcome of Hoppington is the reason many people have moved. So I think it's something that should be discussed and considered by Bob, because I know he has, you know, concerns about the overall social structure of the town. I just want him to consider that because it was promised to us in Hoppington that it would not happen, and it happened tenfold.
I, 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 I hear you, and, and I have no doubt that you accurately describe exactly what happened. It's just that our board is not allowed to consider that as a factor.
Right. I just want Bob to consider it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I, I, I very much consider the public policy issues associated with everything I do, Pete. There's a reason, and I'm happy to sit down offline and have those conversations with you. I, I am a very thoughtful developer in the town of Sherburne.
Sure, I would love that because I'm just saying, when we were in Hoppington, they built the Marathon Elementary School. And Weston Nurseries developed much smaller scale, but percentage-wise, not out of the realm of your development. And we were promised the world, and then before the school was completed, they had to put on addition, and it was pretty much a disaster and why we moved to Sherburne.
To be, to be clear, I'm not promising you anything.
Yes.
And full disclosure about what I'm doing here.
No, but the tapes are running, the tapes are running.
No, but I think these, these statements of like, oh, it's an office. Oh, it's not finished. We heard the same things in Hoppington. Oh, there won't be that many kids. It's a, it's not finished. It's an office. And then it was tenfold what they expected for kids. I'm just telling you, that's what happened five years ago.
Yep, no, no. And, and, and it is well-known that Sherburne is a magnet for people looking for good schools for their kids.
That's exactly.
I did it myself.
Right.
In nineteen eighty-six. So it's been going on for a while.
No, and that's why we moved here. I mean, I grew up in Natick, loved Sherburne. Hoppington exploded beyond what the town could handle for development, and we moved here. And, and I understand, you know, the, the need for you know, affordable housing. I'm a nurse. I work with disabled people. I get all that. But sometimes there has to be a bigger perspective of what's going on here, and someone has to say, hey, is this really beneficial to the town? That's all.
Fair enough. All right, Brian Delgado, please, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry, because I, this, this may have drawn a conclusion, but I'm, I'm just not content, I guess, if it has. The, the question around the cumulative effect of these projects and how we're effectively decoupling what I see, and I think my fellow neighbors and as a butter in thirty-three Greenwood visibly see as really a conjoined project. And, and I just wanted to ask you, is it unreasonable, if the conclusion was drawn, why was it unreasonable to suggest that testing be redone contemplating the overall project and the effect that those projects together will have, the two phases of this single project will have on my well, you know, I have four children in the DS system, since we're talking about kids and the impact socially. You know, our, our family is, I think, directly in the crosshairs of real risk here with stormwater management that on four plots of land that aren't contemplating a forty-unit apartment building right next door. And I think that piece of this argument that we're trying to make as a collective in, in the neighborhood, I think is real. And I think it's just being dismissed as potentially, you know, a creative way of, of the developer, you know, bifurcating these two projects to say, solve stormwater here. But oh, down the road, we're going to do this big project that's going to clearly have an impact on the stormwater management system and, you know, everything that's envisioned in this first project, and it's not going to be retroactively ameliorated. I, I don't see it happening, so.
Okay, so let, let me, that's a, a fair question. Let me try to take a shot at an answer. I certainly don't think the ZBA is being at all dismissive of the cumulative impact issue. What I, what I hope you heard earlier was some back and forth between the Developers Council and me about how broad our rights are to reach into the cumulative impact. There is, there are references to it i- in the, in the project eligibility letter for this project. And yet it is, and it is the same parcel, and it is under one option agreement, and it is the same current property owner right now. But separate projects, separate ownership, even if they have the same manager. And I don't think the, the membership interests, Bob, which are your, your, your private stuff, but I bet they don't line up perfectly, because I'm pretty sure you've got a partner at Washington Street. You say, you said so in your materials. So.
Two different partners, approximately fifty percent, two different partners on.
Right. So, so, so Brian, those are sort of the shoals the board has to navigate here, and we're going to have to be careful about how much we tie the two together.
Yeah, but I, but I, for a practical step, I understand, Rick, and I, I hear a lot of legalese, and I understand all the different navigations of I, I can't say I understand them, but I understand that they are being raised as, you know, compliance with all these other statutes and, and regulations. But I just think from, from the, from the standpoint of someone that doesn't want to do wrong by any of the current neighbors, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask to to request that testing be fully exhaustive in what is contemplated here. Whether it's two projects, it's the same individual, whether he hides behind LLCs and all these other things, I think it's still reasonable to, to request that these be looked at together. And and that, that's all I'm gonna say. So that's.
Okay, fair, fair, fair enough. Th- thank, thank you for the comment. Tia Wallach?
Uh, yeah, just to piggyback on Brian Ted, and I appreciate DeShawn's explanations before. I don't think we got a clear answer to what should be a yes or no question because I, I'm just looking at that letter to the mass housing, whatever the acronym is, where the recommendation was to retest on a cumulative basis after precipitation. I don't think it was just groundwater. I think it was also stormwater management. And so I, we kind of got diverted into talking about, you know, nitrogen, and it sounds like you would address it cumulatively by addressing the Washington Street plans, but I'm just asking very simply, yes or no? Was the testing done to address that letter?
And, and, and here is the unfortunate pushback that most people who say it's a yes or no question, the answer is no, it's not. It's not a yes or no question. I, I know, I know. I know you want it to be a yes or no question, but the answer is to how much we can regulate it is, is maybe some. It's not a yes or no.
So there was a recommendation, was the recommendation heated by the applicant to test again, given that.
They would, they would say yes. They, they, they would say they did, he did, I might not agree with them. That's what I'm saying, you know, a lot, a lot of things in life are not clear yeses and nos. I'm sorry. Daryl, Beardsley?
So I want to mention that we have provided a letter to you shortly before the meeting, or I think it took a while to reach you, so a little after the meet, the meeting started with other comments that we had about the status of requests or waivers and guidance. So one thing I'll mention as background is that the Board of Health would certainly prefer that all of its regulations be followed, local regulations, because we have them for a reason, and we think that they've served the town well. The state encourages towns to adopt additional regulations as fit their situation. State's a minimum. I could go into all of that ad nauseam. But I think I've said it before, and perhaps you recall, but feel free to ask a question if you'd like.
And it sounds like you've answered my question, which is, do, do we have a letter or something from you suggesting what you would like us to do? And the answer is it's there, it's in our inbox. We got it during the meeting.
Yes, and also I'll just, what would make me happier with the third floor is if it was a large unfinished space for storage with nothing really provided by way of providing for heat, what have you, up there, or a single open space with no doors leading up to it, the open staircase leading up to a large open space would make it seem less potential bedroom-like or readily converted to a bedroom. And that loft-like space at the top of stairs would be akin to the loft-like spaces at the top of the stairs on the second floors of the fields at Sherburne and fifty-nine North Main. So it would be consistent with that.
Yeah. Thank you. Julie, just before we get to you, Steve Booley, our peer reviewer, are you there somewhere?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any more comments from your company on the Greenwood project that are not already in our inbox?
Uh, no, there is not. We, we submitted our, our most recent letter on October twenty-sixth, and we recommended a number of conditions, and that's, that's our last communication with the board.
All right, great. Nope, just one, just wanted to make sure I had it. Perfect answer. Thank you. Julie Drafus?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Daryl said, and to add to things that we would prefer to see. Right now on that third floor, there appears to be a full bath, at least a bath with a shower. If that was a half bath, I would certainly feel more comfortable. No bath would be wonderful, but at least downgraded to a half bath. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. DeShawn Wang? I think you're muted.
I definitely can sense the community or the neighbors' concern on the accumulative impact. As engineer, I'm just trying to understand in really rational way and how can we address it or how the town overall to view the problem? Because it's almost, to me, it's right now, there's more concerns and speculations than, and good detailed procedure and mechanism to really understand it and assess it. As I can, I've just, I'm listening, and I'm also just using my sum of minology in the overall population per house. So, so in a way, the impact is not coming from the house itself. It's coming from how many people living in the house. So therefore, I, I would think, even if the board helps, anybody can do a statistic study of similar type of house in Sherburne, how many people is really living there on average? Because that's going to have the total accumulative impact overall for the town or for the, for the neighborhood and the community. So if it's just one single family house, have temporary, some people living near guests or whatever party. So that's, doesn't count as long-term, and everybody, every house have a party. So I'm just trying to see if we can get like a, a more long-term scientific facts-based impact. Because if I remember right, from my understanding in the United States, average people living in a family is about two point six four, two point six something people per house. So as Bob pointed out, this is a four-bedroom with design flow. It is eight people. So so that buffer zone, in my view, provided a very rational base for a long term accumulative impact. So if we are seeing you as that as consensus down the road, so we are going to have average home become seven, nine or twenty people. We all all like it, ten people. So I would have much more a concern of destruct yourself. I think at this stage, it's more people walking from home. They like to have that space they can stay, but not necessarily they want to have more people in the house. That's just a trend in in my readings from uh from the data. So that's just a a foot of thought and for everybody contemplate and and to to get your answers, uh, you know, analyze, contemplate. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Rebecca Honeywell, uh, you're back at your desk and on your phone. There are two of you. Um, does either one of you wish to speak? But you're muted. Rebecca, your phone's on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Yes, this is the one who would like to speak. Um, I just wanted to say that as a Board of Health member, I value protecting drinking water and the public health. As a citizen, I would like to request that the uh that when this um proceeds, if it proceeds, that conditions be requested that this project not be granted any variances at all from our regulations, which are already very minimal. And this is a very complex and delicate ecosystem, which has a potential to for significant risks to um both short term and long term risks to private water supplies, which have limited, as you're very familiar, protections. Um, so that's what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Brian Moore, you're next, sir.
Good evening, Brian Moore again. Um, as a citizen, I just was uh wanted to reiterate here that we have uh an engineer answering questions about the Washington Street project, who's not the engineer on that project. And for um, I think maybe this is a bigger question than should be tackled under one individual project when you have obviously two projects that are part of a phased development, part of a single acquisition, a single entity acquiring it, and having one engineer speaking for what another engineer is doing, as we all know, probably isn't in the best interest of any of the surrounding neighborhoods. So if they're going to have questions about Washington Street, I think it'd be only fair to have a joint hearing where possibly both engineers are present so they could speak to the individual projects that are going on. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that Deshane has has and is doing work on Washington Street. I have two different engineers working on it. Uh, so Deshane is an engineer of record on that project, but but Brian is right. I do have another engineer doing work on it as well. So.
That's not, that's not illegal, immoral, or fat.
Nope.
Um, okay, Rebecca Honeywell, let me ask you to uh lower your computerized hand, please. Brian, same with you. And Daryl Beardsley, did you want to speak?
Uh, yes, I just want to address the comment about gee, there won't be eight people living in this house based on on typical occupancy rates. However, uh, across the country, those who write these kind of regulations, and as I read that comment earlier about when compared with other states, Massachusetts has one of the lowest gallons per bedroom per day requirement. That means that's across the country, these assumptions are being made about how many people live in a bedroom. The people who write the regulations are fully aware of other dynamics that go on. They need to look at potential. But also, there are um quite a number of studies that have been done in in different areas that look at sort of a maximum number of people per square mile. Uh, not maximum, a typical number of square people per mile that impacts to groundwater are noticed. And nitrogen is often referred to only because it's a very good marker of septic effluent. Uh, other things are much harder to trace to that. And two hundred people per square mile is a common number that is used. Of course, those things are going to vary by soil types and what have you. We're two hundred, I forget, twenty ish in in Sherborne. So it's not an unreasonable concern. It's happening at whatever the rates are that people are occupying homes in, uh, despite what the septic regulations are for for managing it. And I don't think that this is the place to question that regulation. It's so hardcoded into septic regulations around the country. I don't think you can make a decision saying, oh gee, that eight people is too high for a four bedroom home or ten is too high for a five bedroom home. So that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Pete Hebert, your hand came up, then it went back down. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, I understand Mr. Wang's statistics and I just want people to look at what happened in Hoppington a few years ago. It's two towns away. And I just wish Bob would stagger it slowly. That's all. I mean, I I just lived through it and I people promised us a bill of goods and said, oh, no, you know, we'll do it. And and it just, it was a disaster and I just, I understand the need for affordable housing. I just wish we could do it more slowly. That's all I have to say.
Okay, fair and fa- fair enough. Uh, Deshaun Wang, something very quickly?
Yes, quicker, Peter. I will looking into it because from the, I also received calls from friends living in Sherburne concerned in this project. I told him and I I I'd like you to put it in a different perspective. Uh, so for this uh four homes, it's like a single family house, if if any affordable uh impact perspective. So at least they have less, but I will looking into the Hoppington one while we are moving on with the Washington. I want to understand what the problems there and this to a degree that when we coming back, we will learn the lesson and to find out what the impact. And so if you trust me, I'm I'm a person like to solve problems, not create a problem. That's my, you know, probably can tell. So.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Four homes, eight homes, twelve homes.
Yeah, if I can get your.
Seventy two is a lot.
If you have, if you have a contact or any detailed information, I will really appreciate if you can forward to Bob or to me while we are doing our design, I would really like to looking into it. That's as engineer, I'm not trying to politically, you know, to to give you just answer broad, but I want to based on facts. Actually, I just did a quick search in Massachusetts, average house number right now dropped to two point five. It used to be two point six eight, okay? And that's what a trend of looking into China, China usually one child per family right now. They even let people uh uh to 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 uh to have as many children as they want, they're still dropping. So I'm just, I want to point out some of the 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 basic trend, but it's not like and I want to using this for my design excuse. But they have to, we all have to consider, just like in, you know, for the weather, everything for environmental impact. We have to be based uh 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 facts based. But yeah, please, I I I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate that because Sherburne is not a vacuum, and that's what happened in Hoppington. Well, you can't compare it to some, you know, town in Orange, Mass, where people, there was a massive influx to get to the schools. And DS schools are highly regarded, and that's what will happen. There will not be this slow progression of, oh, a couple in their fifties, a couple, you know, it will be a mass influx of kids. And I just wish that we could stagger it slowly. That's all I'm saying. And I I understand the need for affordable housing. If we do too much too soon, Pine Hill will be old, they will, they will freak out. I I've seen it, and I don't want to see it again.
All right, and and I I I I get, I get it. I hear you. We're not allowed to consider that, and and you hear me on that one. Um, Judith Shindel Rothschild.
I hear that, but Bob is allowed to consider it.
Bob, Bob can consider it, absolutely.
I consider lots of public policy things, and it it doesn't have to go the way it's going. Um, but there's just not enough collaboration among all of us to make this happen in a different way. So it's happening the way it's happening because it's a grind. If we collaborate with each other, it doesn't have to happen this way. Thank you.
Bob, I I think if you respect the concerns of the neighbors and go slowly, people will welcome it. If it's forced on our throats of a mass influx, people will reject it.
Okay, but but Pete, I think we need to, we we really need to shut off this angle of the conversation because it's it's inappropriate for the ZBA in a forty B.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Um, Judith Shindel Rothschild.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Judith Shindel Rothschild, sixty three Lake Street, Sherburne, Massachusetts. I have a simple question.
Uh, that's like a yes or no question. Go ahead.
Am I correct in understanding that the Massachusetts Community MBTA law requires the Sherburne Town as an adjacent town to construct or zone seventy eight affordable housing, multifamily housing units?
I don't know the answer to that one. I know we are subject to that statute and I'm, but I'm not familiar with the exact mechanism for how it it functions uh with respect to the town of Sherburne. Because it's it's not part of forty B, it's a separate statute. So I'm sorry to duck it, but I don't know.
I could do that, Rick, but I know you don't want me to.
Well, Marion, Marion Neidra has her hand up. Maybe, maybe, maybe we'll have her do it. Marian? Marian?
Unmute. Yes, yes. The hour's getting late, and I really shouldn't start uh a discussion now, but just shorthand. Uh, the MBTA Communities Act requires Sherburne to zone a certain amount of land that could potentially be used for multifamily housing, not affordable, multifamily housing. Uh, but it does not require that the housing be built. It leaves it leaves that up to time. I think that's all I should say right now.
And and that's fine, because it it is essentially off topic for for this board and and this hearing, uh, although a a perfectly rational, human nature thing to wonder about.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as Marian said, the hour is late. Um, if anybody, Judith, could you possibly uh lower your electronic hand? Uh, there we go. Um, anybody has something new and different to say on the Greenwood Street project? Uh, we'd be glad to hear it. Um, to the extent people are repeating arguments they've made before, we might ask that the the prior statements be considered adequate. I see Daryl's hand up.
Yes, so sorry to uh if this has been said before, but I think I misstating it that having the full bathroom in the basement connected to a room by Sherborne regulations automatically makes it a bedroom, which would be five. And it's the full bathroom. That's the issue.
Right. But we're but we're going to have in your records or maybe something from Julie, not only the plans which we have in our own records, but your views of the correct bedroom counts for these, right?
Can I answer for Daryl?
Please.
Um, yes, yes, you have all of our recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you both very much. Okay, um, ZBA Board members. Well, first of all, Mr. Murchison, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But I'll bet that you and Mr. Haverty aren't particularly interested in further extending the Greenwood hearing.
I think it would be best to move forward. Yes, thank you, Rick.
Okay, so we do not have a developer uh agreement to an extension beyond tonight. Uh, in that case, ZBA Board members, I'd look for a motion. Well, first of all, we can discuss trying to ask for further uh extensions, things like that. But I think they've made their position fairly clear. Um, I'd I'd entertain a motion to uh to close the hearing or any other constructive motion from my board members. Im impeachment of the chair would be even more welcome, but uh probably not going to get that one.
No, I won't do that. I will move to uh close the hearing.
All right, is there a second for that?
Seconded.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to close the hearing for Greenwood Street uh uh here on the night of February fifth, twenty twenty four. Um, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, before we close that hearing, are there any other boards here that would like to close their meeting first?
Yes. So I would.
This time I remembered, Daryl. Last time I forgot, but you reminded me. So this time I remembered.
I was getting ready to shoot my hand up. Um, uh, I'd like to, is there a motion to close the Board of Health meeting?
So moved, seconded.
No, carry no further discussion. Daryl Beardsley, aye.
Julie Drifus, aye. Diana Hook, aye.
Let's see if I still have a quorum, Rick. So do I have a motion from the select?
Rebecca Honeywell, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, Rebecca. Uh, do I have a a motion from the Select Board members to uh close the Select Board meeting?
So moved.
All right, I'll take that as a second, Marian. Okay, Stephen, sigh.
Aye.
Marian?
Aye.
And I might as well. Thank you, Rick. Great meeting.
I'm also aye, by the way. You're losing track of me. I'm also.
Yeah, I didn't see you. You you weren't on the screen. You disappeared for some reason.
Yeah, you probably went on the second screen.
Eric Johnson. It's I, also I, okay. So we're four zip. Thank you. So uh, the motion on the table is to, it moved and seconded to uh close the Greenwood Street hearing. Um, no further being, there being no further discussion. CBA votes by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Bobby, aye.
My pride, aye.
Okay, four zip. We're we're done with the public hearing part of this. Thanks, everybody, for your efforts. I know it's a a long grind and difficult. Um, I would still have to thrash through a decision, but we appreciate everybody's input and 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 constructive, thoughtful uh way of handling things. So, thank you all.
Yeah, man, were you, were you gonna schedule a deliberative session tonight?
Um, I think we're probably going to talk about that maybe on the thirteenth. I don't I don't think we have to. Now that we closed our hearing, so 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 long as we give, so long as we ultimately uh.
As long as it's on your agenda within forty eight hours.
Yep. Okay. Um, all right. Thank you all and good night.